For the appointment of Hallie Keeler to the Board of Ethics. Hearing none, I need a motion to move this to the Mayor and Council Agenda of May 4th, 2020.
Councilor, you can say your voice.
I need a s-
I'll stand for a second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much, thank you Hallie.
Thank you all, happy birthday.
Okay, we're going to move to number 767, which is the expansion of the Passenger Rail Service. And I have Zell Stever on the phone, who we will, he will present a presentation. So, Zell, I'll turn it over to you. Zell, can you hear me? You may need a star six to unmute.
You need to unmute him.
How do I do that? I mean, I don't have him muted.
You don't have him muted?
Zell, can you hear me? If star six doesn't work, try pound six. No, I mean, I don't, I did not overtly do anything to mute him.
He's on, he's on mute. Yeah, I should mute. Haven't called back?
Uh, haven't called back? Whoops, he's calling, go ahead. Okay. Zell, the floor is yours.
The floor is yours. Okay, um, I've got a huge amount of feedback here, but we'll try this. Um, I'm going to, um, I'm going to try to unmute him and see what happens there. That doesn't help, does it?
There we go.
Okay, you should be okay.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you clearly, I am muted and Jill is muted, so...
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay. So, um, let's go to the PowerPoint, um, back on the screen there, if we could do that.
Okay, we're on the, uh, the cover page, it says proposal for expanded-
Jill, have we got the PowerPoint on the screen?
Yes.
PowerPoint's on the screen. Where the lead, the lead slide is proposal for expanded passenger rail service. I'm muted.
Oh, um, uh, I can't hear a thing because of the feedback. So, what I'm gonna suggest you do is I'm gonna turn off, I'm gonna turn off the, uh, Skype. And do it through the phone with Jill, uh, pushing the PowerPoint. Would that be acceptable?
That's preferred, yes. Okay, Zell, you're on.
Okay, hold on a second, I gotta get to my screen. Okay, um, well, good evening and thank you very much, Mayor, for inviting me to, um, about participate with the, uh, Groton City Council. Um, um, as some of you may know, I live in the town of Groton over in Noack, and been here for some, uh, fifty years or so. And I got involved with, um, doing some work with the town, um, zoning revisions. And, um, this is about now three years ago, uh, it became clear that, uh, the town was interested in doing some mixed-use development along the Route 1 corridor, uh, you all know is, uh, pretty well referred to as Hamburger Hill, although it's a bit of a derogatory term. But that got me to looking at and participating with those meetings, I essentially attended almost all of those meetings. And one of the things that I found is when I'm looking upon, um, mixed-use, it became clear that mixed-use really worked well if you had a good mass transit associated with it. And it became clear when I looked a little further that we have Amtrak running right through apparel to Route 1 along that section, uh, of the strip malls in Groton. So that led me to, uh, look more carefully at, um, how and whether it might be possible to do something about, um, a train system that would connect up, uh, the, the, uh, the new zoning, the mixed-use zoning in the downtown part of Groton. So, when I started this whole thing, it became obvious that, um, I had gotten into something that, um, was, uh, bigger than I had thought. And so, um, what I've done is I've spent, uh, now, uh, almost, um, eighteen months, I guess it is, working on, uh, this proposal. And so this is the proposal that I've got prepared tonight, and it basically does two things. It extends Shoreline East from, uh, currently from New London all the way to, uh, Rhode Island, uh, to Westerly. And would establish the second part is a new Norwich branch line that would run from basically the intersection of 349 where, uh, Gro- uh, where Electric Boat is on the, uh, west side of the street, and on the east side of the street is Pfizer's. It would come around, there'd be a new station that gets created, and then it goes on up to the Navy Base. So if we go to slide two, can you, can you get there?
Yes, you're there.
Are you guys slide two?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, we're slide two.
Hello? I've lost somebody here.
No, you're, we're on slide two, Zell. Zell, can you hear me?
Hold on a second, please. Okay, can you, can someone say something?
Zell, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, can you keep?
Okay, we're on, we're on slide two.
We should be on slide number two?
We are.
Okay. And so, just a little bit of history, Shoreline East is operated on the Amtrak line, it runs basically sixty-two miles from, uh, New Haven to New London. It has nine stops, um, uh, starting, uh, from the east, New London, St. Brook, uh, Westbrook, Clinton, Madison, Guilford, Branford, and New Haven, where there's two stops, one in State Street and one in Union Station. And of the eighteen trains, uh, that run, uh, they run between New Haven and Old St. Brook, and only three trains run or leave from New London going to New Haven, and four trains arrive from each day, uh, from, uh, uh, New London, uh, to New Haven. So that gives you some sense that, uh, most of the activity is taking place between, uh, Old St. Brook and, 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 uh, New Haven. So if we go to slide three...
We're, we're on slide three.
Slide three? You got it?
Yes.
Okay, so slide three, basically Shoreline East was established to basically provide, uh, shoreline, uh, service to New York City. It was aimed at taking deal from Connecticut along the shore to New York City. And they weren't much concerned about taking people east toward, uh, Rhode Island, Providence, and Boston. Um, basically in 2011, uh, which was the peak, there was around six hundred thousand people who rode that line. And then after the crash, uh, the economic downturn, um, uh, of, uh, 2009, um, that almost dropped in half, but recently, the last year or so, is up about three percent per year. So the Shoreline East ends in London, there's no service to Groton, Stonington, or onto Rhode Island. And yet it's only a hundred and fourteen miles between New Haven and Providence, and as you all well know, um, the, uh, uh, Amtrak is basically set up to be a regional, uh, system which runs along the entire east coast, you know, going up, uh, from Boston, uh, down through, um, or going down to Providence, then, uh, New London sometimes, and then New Haven, New York, and south, um, to, to Washington DC. So let's go to the next slide, number four. And this shows you a... You guys there yet?
We're there.
Okay, uh, that shows you a, basically a aerial photograph which has been enhanced. The yellow lines show you where the interstates are, and you can see the, 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 uh, ten-lane bridge going across, the Gold Star Bridge going across the Thames River there. And then if you look, um, you'll see there's a dark black line that starts at the, uh, um, bottom of the screen, goes up, snakes through Lu- New London, then crosses the river, and then goes on off to, toward the right side of the screen, and that's the Amtrak, double track that goes from there on to, um, uh, to Providence and beyond. And it stops only here in this photograph right now at the, at the New London stop, and there's nothing, um, um, beyond that. So now if you go to the next slide, you'll see a, a different version of the same area, number, slide number, uh, five.
We're there.
And this is a blow-up, blown-up version of what the, basically the transportation system looks like in Southeastern Connecticut. You have I-95 running along the shoreline, you have 395 that, uh, basically goes from Waterford on up, uh, to Massachusetts, and then you've got the orange lines which basically show the state roads in that area. And if you look very, very closely on this map, you see this little black line that runs along which shows you where the, the Amtrak is, and then on both sides of the river, going up the Thames, there are train tracks that run up there. So if we go to the next slide...
Okay, we're there.
Um, I'm just gonna show you quickly a series of photographs that show you, um... Let me see where we got here. Okay, I, oh, I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself here. So, um, I'm in, uh, slide six, and that basically shows you... That this, this proposal is really two parts. One is to extend the Shoreline East from, uh, on the east-west axis, and then it is to establish a north-south, uh, axis, a branch line, which I, uh, for purposes of the argument of, of before, is to call the Norwich Branch because it goes from Groton up to, up to Norwich, and that would be, uh, the second part of the proposal. And if we go to the next slide, number seven...
Okay, we're there.
Um, basically, uh, what this does is it would, um, extend the passenger service all the way to Rhode Island, and we would build three new stations in phase one, one in Niatic, which has already been under study for now ten years, build a Groton Center Station, and then there would be probably a new center, a new station in, in Stonington, either using the existing Mystic Station, which is, uh, basically only one or two trains stop on Amtrak, but not used by, by Shoreline East at all. And so what this would do would basically connect up the Shoreline East to Westerly, Rhode Island, and then in the future could run all the way up to Wickford Junction, where then connects to the Massachusetts Bay Transit Authority, which then would run to, uh, fully all the way to Providence and then on to Boston. And so, um, what we propose to do is we propose to use new passenger trains, or passenger coaches with, with, um, energy-efficient and modern features such as things as wifi and so forth. And then we connect this with the Shoreline East, we connect to the new Norwich branch line, um, at, uh, a station in, in, in Groton. And then, um, the idea would be to run this service as a little commuter from five in the morning to ten in the evening, and with a, a definite, different, uh, schedule for the weekends. And so one of the things that this process does, it begins to solve the last mile problem, as it's called. So we'd be able to bring, um, commuters in from the west, from the east, and from the north, and basically drop them off, um, at either Electric Boat or Pfizer's. Or, uh, if you went north, you'd drop them off to, uh, at the south end of the base, sub-base. And we go to the next slide, number eight. And here is a picture of the, um, uh, road, if you will, the roads and the tra- and the train line, and you notice that, um, this goes from the, uh, Connecticut River on the, um, uh, 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 left side of your screen to, over here to the far side, which is up to Westerly, Rhode Island. And you notice that the train track actually snakes quite a bit through that whole area. And so this particular set of tracks, no matter what you do, you'll never be able to run super-high-speed trains through there because of the curves. And that's why some years ago, they decided they wanted to run a system or train tracks from, uh, basically Old St. Brook, and cutting across north of this whole area and going straight to Providence. And if you recall, there was a great deal of flap about that, uh, because, uh, our whole region would lose, uh, a train service, and then the folks up north thought that it would be a really, uh, a problem having, uh, new tracks going through their communities. And if you look carefully on this map, you'll see there's a, uh, uh, a, a set of, uh, little red, um, uh, what, the train cars, I'm not sure if you can see it on the computer, unfortunately if this was on a PowerPoint, you could see it, but there's one at, um, uh, the intersection of where, uh, Electric Boat and Pfizer's meet on, uh, 349. There is a, um, a, a point where the, the, the three tracks run parallel in Groton, and then there would be a point up here by the top end of the sub-bays. Uh, so going to the next, next slide, number nine. Are we there yet?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Now, number nine just basically shows you an Amtrak train at the New London Station. If we go to, uh, the next slide, number ten...
We're there.
You already recognize that as being the old, uh, fancy, uh, station that is, uh, right downtown New London. And then the next station that we, going, going east is the London Mystic, and that's no longer really a station, it's now a, a coffee bar. And then if you go from there up to, um, uh, Rhode Island, you end up having, uh, uh, the station at, uh, Wickford Junction, um, at the end, which is the following slide. And so you see, um, there's a series of slides here. Now, on the, on the slide that shows you the Wickford Junction, you'll see that there is one set of tracks that are right close to the, um, the platform, and then if you look to the, uh, right side of your screen, uh, you'll see that there is a, a parallel, two sets of tracks to the, to the, to the east essentially. Those two that are to the east or to the right side of the screen, those are the Amtrak. And the ones that are close to the platform, uh, is part of the, um, of the Massachusetts, uh, Rhode Island system where it ends in Wickford Junction. So the idea would be to eventually get the train track to run all the way up, and so you would have a commuter system that runs the entire, um, uh, length from Boston down to Rhode Island and through to Connecticut, uh, down all the way to New York. So if we go to the next slide, that's number fourteen.
We're there.
Okay. That shows you, um, basically what we're talking about in terms of the branch line, and that would run on what's called the old Providence and Worcester Railroad, and it would begin, um, at the, at the, uh, it would be basically a passenger commuter service that would link the, at first, the US Navy Base at the south end to Pfizer's and Electric Boat. And we'd have to build three new, uh, train platforms, one at the south gate of the base where the normal is, uh, currently, uh, moored, then one at the center of Groton where the two Amtrak, uh, tracks parallel the Worcester and Providence tracks to the south, and then finally bending around by the airport and coming across Birch Plain Creek up into where, uh, 349 crosses, where this, the, the, the train track crosses, the 349 going into Electric Boat, where the, the junction of Electric Boat and, and Pfizer's. And we might use something like light rail or maybe the new M8 equipment on the Providence and Worcester, Worcester Line. This way you would connect the Shoreline East with this new, uh, Norwich branch line, uh, with the two, two train systems, uh, basically, um, connecting at the, what I now call the Groton Center Station. And it'd be serviced again, as we said, from, um, early in the morning until late in the evening, and it basically solves that last mile problem. So if we go on to the next slide, this shows you a blow-up of this, this is number fifteen.
We're there.
And fifteen shows you, um, a blow-up which, um, uh, which you may have a little bit hard time seeing, but it's, uh, it shows the three, the three new stations on the, uh, Norwich branch line, and potentially this line, if we get permission to go through the base, could go all the way to Norwich and then ultimately all the way up to Worcester, Rhode Island, uh, Worcester, I'm sorry, Massachusetts. And so there potentially would be a north-south ability to commute, and it would, um, connect to this east-west of the Shoreline East. Now the next, uh, uh, slide, number sixteen, shows you a, a, a blow-up of the, um, are we there yet?
We're there.
Okay. Uh, sixteen shows you, and I'm not sure, does that look like it's pretty black on your screen, or can you, you all see that?
We can see it.
Uh, okay, you can see it. Well, so those three red circles show, um, potentially locations for, uh, the, the, the three stops for the, um, Norwich branch line. So go to the next slide.
We're there.
And this gives you, um, sort of a vision, um, for the future rail service for Southeastern Connecticut. It would basically improve connecting Shoreline East from Old St. Brook to Rhode Island. It establishes a new branch line on the Worcester and Providence Railroad, which is, I might add norm, or not, 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 normally right now being used as a freight line. It uses, uh, one of the nice things about this particular project, it uses existing, um, tracks, both, uh, Connecticut, um, uh, the Providence and Worcester and the Amtrak. It uses, uh, existing stations which are underutilized, Mystic, Westerly, Kingston, and Wickford, and we create these new stops at Niatic, um, Groton, Stonington, uh, the sub-base, um, uh, the sub-base Pfizer intersection. And so what it would do is link towns and cities in Eastern Connecticut by passenger rail. And so if we go to the next slide...
We're there.
This is, so what do we get from all this? Well, we get increased use of rail service to the center of our industrial base for commuters in Southeastern Connecticut. And basically it also creates the inter, the possibility of inter-Connecticut commuting. It, 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 uh, opens up the opportunity for this, uh, commuting from New York City to Boston through, uh, uh, New London, Groton, uh, Providence, and it, uh, also creates the north-south axis from Groton, uh, Norwich to, to Worcester. And it basically what it is, is it's an alternative to using cars for transportation and gets cars and trucks off the road. Now, as you all probably know, roughly ninety-five percent of all the commuting that takes place in our region is done by, um, cars and, uh, light trucks with one person in those vehicles. And what this does is essentially reduces the, uh, future traffic congestion in I-95 to the 395, and would support the growth of the activities of Electric Boat and the rest of the region. And so what it does is improves safety, reduces the number of delays and accidents for commuters. Going to the next slide.
We're there.
Um, this also gets you, uh, improved environmental benefits in terms of air quality, um, better ability to work as you commute, um, because you can be on a train and not having to worry about, um, uh, the, the traffic ahead of you or delays and so forth. It, it will improve the industrial and economic base of our region, and this also supports, um, I think, the additional workforce that's been proposed to Electric Boat, um, from the five thousand to eighteen thousand, I, eighteen thousand new jobs. Now I have to tell you that, um, the eighteen thousand, I think is a bit, a bit, maybe, uh, more than, uh, that's really, they're really talking about, I think more like five thousand to fourteen thousand of, uh, jobs is more likely, uh, a reality over the next, um, uh, twenty years. Although, these numbers do not reflect, uh, the increase in the, uh, the necessary personnel that's gonna be needed, be, be needed at the, uh, sub-base, because for every new boat they build, an electric boat, this is gonna take five thousand, uh, five hundred new, new sailors and two crews with their families still living in the area. So it actually ends up the, probably a much more dramatic number of people coming to the region than, uh, most people think. And so what this does is also supports both, um, it supports the mixed-use development, both for the town and the city of Groton. And the, the, the town has already got that, uh, regulation in place, and as I understand from talking with the mayor, uh, you are also thinking about such a, a district in, in the city. And so this would allow people to live, um, in, in pretty dense areas and, and basically to be able to commute to work. And so what this creates is the transit area development opportunity, which brings along with it a whole series of new funding sources for both Groton and other municipalities in, in Connecticut and in Rhode Island. Next slide.
Okay, we're there.
And so, um, what are the steps that, uh, we, we, we need to consider here? Well, we need to sort of study, fund, promote, and operate a modern expanded passenger rail service in the region. So the first step is letters of support from local communities and our partners in, uh, to Connecticut Department of Transportation and to the governor. Now I think, um, you have already been handed out a, uh, three documents. One is the letter from the town of Groton to the governor asking that they undertake this effort, and, uh, um, I have talked now to, uh, you all, and I would love to have a letter, uh, coming from the city of Groton to the governor, also requesting this sort of study. I've already had initial conversations, uh, before the virus crisis with, uh, the mayor of, uh, New London, um, and, and, and he is very interested in this proposal. And unfortunately, due to the, the virus and the, uh, difficulties of having meetings, we haven't, I actually haven't met with their council yet, and I will do that, uh, as soon as that becomes available. And I've also had the same conversation about this proposal with the selectmen from, from Stonington, they, uh, the selectman is also, the first selectman is also very excited and interested about this, this project as well. So that's the first thing we need to do, um, basically to have letters of support from our local community. And I've talked to, um, your mayor about, um, working with the, uh, Regional Planning Agency to get their, uh, buy-in of this as well. I should note that in the recent, um, uh, master plan that was put together by, uh, the Regional Planning Agency, this project, the Shoreline East Extension, is one of the eleven, uh, projects that they believe is a high priority. So we've got already, uh, some level of support from the Regional Planning Agency as well. Now I've also, um, uh, last week had a chance to, uh, do a, uh, video meeting, um, yeah, using one of the other platforms with the Connecticut Commuter Rail Council, and they have, they have agreed to, uh, provide a letter to the governor also supporting this proposal. And so the next will be to get support from our regional, state, uh, federal, and private, uh, entities to basically, uh, put pressure on the state of Connecticut to undertake this thing. And so really the final step will be to get, uh, full public support and full, uh, political engagement to really make this whole thing happen. And so what this does, I think, is give potentially the, the region an alternative way of getting to our industrial center, um, both in New London and in Groton particularly, um, by using some other method of transportation besides, besides the car. And I think it's, uh, pretty clear, although you wouldn't know it by, uh, the price of our gas right now, um, this is gonna become an issue as we go forward because, uh, as some of you probably already know, thirty, thirty-eight percent of our greenhouse gases comes from, uh, our, uh, uh, using, uh, cars and tr- uh, light trucks to commute, uh, to and from work. And if we can get people to start thinking about using and probably having an alternative to get to work, using, uh, mass transit, it would be, uh, I think, a really benefit for all the community. So if we go to the last slide...
Okay, we're there.
And it's basically, um, I guess next to last slide. Uh, so what this does is, um, it basically, um, uh, is proposes to provide a modern commuting, uh, train transportation system, and, um, uh, it's, uh, uh, going to be- And it's going to be some effort to try to overcome public's resistance to change. And part of it is that if we provide a modern system, I think it might be very attractive for many people. Cost of services are simply going to have to be subsidized, both directly and indirectly. But I also should point out that we, in the regional plan, we have already indicated that we expect to spend somewhere in the neighborhood of a billion dollars in upgrading our road systems. And so this would be a small part of the transportation plan compared to what we're proposing to spend on our roads. And so planning, designing, financing, and operating a new reliable, modern public transportation system is going to be challenging for us all. We'll have some other issues to overcome, that is resolving the regulatory issues around the bridges on the Thames River, the Connecticut River, and the Mystic River. And then we'll have the problem of simply getting a new passenger service operational and producing results in a timely manner. And part of this is, is that it has become clear to me, particularly in the last month, that with the virus that's now affecting us all and really putting a lot of people at risk with their jobs and so forth, that we're probably likely to see a federal effort, particularly on infrastructure. And so part of my thought here is that we, if we can get this thing into a planning stage, maybe we can have a shovel-ready infrastructure project that would benefit the entire community. And so the last slide, basically, my thesis is if we build a modern, reliable, efficient, cost-effective public transportation system in a timely manner, and I think timely is very important here, the public will come and our quality of life will improve. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the mayor you have or members of the council you have on this whole thing. And what I would love to have from the city is a letter of support for this proposal going forward. But let me start by asking if there's any questions.
Okay, thank you, Zell, for your presentation. Counselor McCabe has a question. Counselor McCabe?
Okay, I can't hear any questions. I'm gonna have to go, I think I'm gonna have to go back on the system, because I've been off of your system, so let me do that, okay?
Well, hold on, she'll say it, and then I'll repeat it to you, and we'll go that way, I think. That might make it easier.
Okay, well, I'll also try to log back in too, see if I can do that.
Counselor McCabe, we can hear you.
Thank you. First of all, I wanted to thank you for bringing this presentation in to us in Connecticut. It was really interesting, exciting, and I could tell that a lot of the mind and effort into it. My question to you is, do you work for Eastern Connecticut rail system? Or is this, what brings this to us, for me?
Okay.
I couldn't hear any of that.
Well, I know, but I'm about to give it to you. Can you hear me?
At least we got the question.
At least we got the question.
What are we doing? Am I asking or is she asking? Okay, Zell, here's the question. First of all, do you work for the rail company in any way, shape, or form? And why did you pick this?
Hold on a second. Geez, I've gotta get this thing off here.
He needs to turn his microphone off.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead, try that again.
The question was, are you affiliated with the rail system in any way? And if not, why did you choose this? What about this got you involved?
Oh, okay. So first of all, I'm not affiliated with any of the railroads other than having been a person over the years that has commuted on rails throughout my career. What got me involved was because, as some of you know, I've done a lot of environmental work in the town over the last 50 years. We retired 15 years ago and came back to live in Nohank. And so I've been involved with the planning and zoning folks here for some time. As some of you may know, I'm chairman of the, was chairman of the Sustainability and Climate Change Task Force in the town, which was then, a year ago, reconstituted. And now it's a task force on resiliency and sustainability. And I had started this before that task force was formed, because I was particularly interested and taken with the fact that the town was seriously interested in really doing mixed-use development. And what I found when I looked at the literature, and I had sort of known this for some time, I knew that if you had good mass transit associated with mixed-use development, it becomes much more attractive for all the parties involved. That is, the people who live there, for the businesses operate there, and for those people who want to get to work. And so it comes about solely on my part as a interested citizen who's had a long sort of career in environmental policy.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, was this moved? Was, do I need consensus, or do I want to move it?
Consensus will do.
Okay. Then, counsel, I'm looking for consensus from you to write a letter of support for this project.
This is Counselor Stanford. I'm in agreement for support.
Okay.
This is Counselor DeBai, great.
Okay.
Counselor McHale, great as well.
Okay. Anyone else? I mean, I'll take it, I'll take it at that and move forward with it. Okay. Zell, thank you very much, and we'll talk to you later.
Okay, mayor, I'd be happy to, at any point, come back. First of all, I make it so that I keep you guys posted as how this thing goes. And second, I'd be happy to come back and chat with you in more detail about some of the specifics of this. I think this is probably a pretty hard way to a PowerPoint presentation. This was set up for a big screen and not for small computers. So I apologize for that, but I'd be happy to work with you all going forward. So let me know, and I'll be happy to do whatever we need to do.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Zell. Okay. We're going to move to 769, which is the Baker Cove watershed. And tonight, we have Mara Robey that will do the presentation on the Baker Cove watershed. Mara, are you still there?
I'm here.
Okay, you get an award.
I didn't say I was listening.
Well, that's okay.
Okay, hold on.
All right, we're loading your presentation.
Okay, can everybody see the screen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Mara, we'll turn it over to you.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. There's a little bit of feedback, so I'm hearing myself, so that might be a little...
Is her microphone on, on her laptop? Because that would cause the feedback.
Any suggestions?
I was asked if your microphone was on, on your laptop, but then we couldn't hear her.
Is her laptop or...
Do you think laptop?
I am.
She is. But if she doesn't have her microphone on, then we couldn't hear her.
Is she also on the phone? She's not on both, right?
No, she's just on her computer.
You know what? Maybe if I turn down my own volume?
Yes. If you turn down the volume on your computer, it should give you less feedback.
Okay. Okay, so thank you, Jill. Thank you, Mayor Hendrick. And thank you to the council members for taking the time to listen. Again, I'm Mara Robey, I'm a conservation technician at Eastern Connecticut Conservation District, or ECCD. Also watershed coordinator for the Baker Cove Watershed Committee. I'm here on behalf of the committee to seek the city's council's endorsement of the Baker Cove Watershed Base Plan. So for those of you who haven't heard of the Eastern Connecticut Conservation District, we're a nonprofit natural resource conservation organization. We tend to focus on water quality issues. And just a few of the things that we do, as an example, we write grants to provide assistance to towns with things like MSG alarm services. We also provide non-point source pollution reduction by installing tree filters and rain gardens and educational workshops, things like that. We also have a number of watershed organizations besides the Baker Cove. We have the Thames River Basin Partnership. We have the Nyannick River Watershed Committee. And all these committees work with our partners to implement things from the watershed-based plans. We also partner with NRSCS, USDA NRSCS, which is Natural Resources Conservation Service, and bring conservation plans for ag producers. We can assist municipal municipalities with erosion and sediment reviews as well as pot reviews. So that's just some of the things that we do. Go to the next slide. Okay, so I hope everyone got a chance to review the executive summary. And so I'm just gonna go through and try to summarize that a little bit. So the Baker Cove Watershed Base Plan was written by ECCD in 2011. This was written with a great deal of input stakeholders, both from the city and the town, also local environmental organizations, as well as the NCC and UConn for their expertise. So the Baker Cove is a care where great shellfish consumption, where it's permitted. And this is due to high levels of ecolol from bacteria. We know this from the Connecticut Water Quality Reports going back to 2011. And some possible non-point sources of pollution, which are actually things like nutrients and sediment and bacteria, can come from various types of root and stormwater runoff. It also comes from floating discharges, pet waste, all kinds of pollutants that can come from residential districts. So the Baker Cove Plan recommends to have strategies to reduce the ecolol from bacteria in the Baker Cove. You can go to the next slide. So this is a map of the three local watersheds entering into the cove. The cove is circled in red. And actually, since 2011, there were three watersheds on that map. And I've added another one right here at the southern end of the Groton-New London airport. So that's been added in blue since this report was done, because that is another source of runoff, it should be proposed as well. We also have the Pecan River watershed there outlined in green. And we are, need to do more research to see if that may be contributing to the Baker Cove area as well. So the goal, sorry, that was on my next slide. Okay, you go ahead, next slide. I just wanted to show shellfish area classifications in the area. So this is taken from Connecticut Eco Online Mapping. And it shows the prohibited area of the Baker Cove. And it also shows some areas around there, light green and dark green, that are restricted and conditionally restricted for lay. So those areas are places where shellfish can be cleaned first in order they can, in order to be consumed. There's also an area by the river there that is yellow, so that's conditionally approved. And it can have direct consumption when the area is actually open. So there is testing that has to be done in order for these areas to be open. The goal with us is to, for the Baker Cove Plan, is to try to reopen the Baker Cove's recreational shellfishing. Now, this would more likely be a seasonal opening, if it can be opened. And we would work closely with the Department of Agriculture here of agriculture, as well as the Shellfish Commission and the airport as well. You can go to the next slide. So this is just an example taken from the Baker Cove Watershed Base Plan of Table 7. Just to show, you should have the full list of the table here planned out. These are recommendations, management strategies, to align management better. So in the blue, you see our resources, including best management practices. And so this is just giving an idea of when the track-down survey was done for the Watershed Base Plan, literally walking through the watersheds, observing some locations and then strategies to improve. And some comments were brought down as well. You can go to the next. So some strategies that have actually been carried out so far. Some of the recommendations that were done was 2015. Hopefully, you are aware that there are sedimentary filters in the parking lot of our municipal complex. I hope that you've had a chance to see those, and there's some signage there as well. So that's a good way to infiltrate stormwater runoff and clean it before it heads into Birch Plain Creek. Next slide. So in 2019, we received funding for the Baker Cove Canada Goose Project. This was a recommendation in the plan for coordinated Canada goose spot control. And so I had some stakeholder meetings, and I ran that project. We had volunteers doing goose surveys. We had some folks from Pfizer and from UConn, some students, and various environmental organizations that were stakeholders helped with that. And we also created this fact sheet as educational material and did a couple of workshops, and also created a management matrix, which is on the next slide. So again, this is just one example, small example, from the matrix. The matrix does have a lot of different locations. So these site locations were determined through the surveys. And the manager of some of these properties gave us some great information about things that there are to do to manage Canada geese and to try to keep the ecolol from being used in water. And so... And so we also added some research that we did, some management recommendations and improvements. You can go to the next slide. So at the end of 2018, based off of the Canada Goose Project, we were able to start up a Baker Cove Watershed Committee to try to continue to make progress and work on those implementations. So we're very appreciative to have the mayor very involved, very integral part of this committee. And we also... This is an ongoing plan of work that we're working on. And so this will continually evolve, but this is just a small portion to show people an idea. In blue, we have things that the committee decided to work on for 2020, trying to work on. So we have some ongoing efforts. You can go to the next slide. So I just wanted to show another portion of the plan of work. We have a task that we are currently doing. And that is to ask for a resolution to endorse the Baker Cove Watershed Base Plan from the Grattan City Council, as well as from the Town Council. You can go to the next slide. So what I'm here representing the committee. And what we are asking for is actually not money, so we're hoping that will actually help our cause. And we are respectfully advocating that the Grattan City Council adopt a resolution to endorse the Baker Cove Watershed Base Plan. This will really show strong support for the plan to have the city council and the town council do this. It'll help us to achieve water quality standards, and hopefully restore the recreational shellfishing to show the residents of the city and the town that you guys are involved with the work that we're doing. Benefit that with the city and town. And so it also supports moving the ability to have the shellfish consumption, even though to try to reduce the elevated levels of fecal call from bacteria, and potentially get that off of the integrated water quality reports for Connecticut Deep. And then also to get that area removed from the parent water bodies, from the Clean Water Act 303D list. And then we are also, ECCD is currently applying to our Low and Sound Future Fund for funding, so we can continue to implement recommended measures. This time, things like white parent buffers, renewable basives, and adding some educational workshops, things like that. We feel like we'll be put in a higher ranking when we're seeking these grants to have the council adopt a resolution. And also, we know that Connecticut Deep is very favorable, looks on it favorably for pursuing our stakeholder endorsements. So I thank you again for your time, and I can take questions now or later if you'd like.
Okay, council will open up the floor for questions or comments?
Comments? Counselor Sisier?
Counsel Ortiz?
Yes, just wanted to bring the attention that I am having extremely difficult time to follow this. I can't hear the sound, a big echo, like one sentence of some of the other. So I just wanna make that clear.
Okay.
This is Linda. I have to say that I am experiencing the same thing, very difficult to hear.
Okay, all I would ask is that people make sure that your devices are muted to mitigate any feedback we may have. Sometimes that helps.
Why is there no echo when you talk?
'Cause I'm loud.
No.
Hold on, we are attempting something on this side. Can I plug it?
I don't know.
See if that is better? Well, you said I'm not the issue.
Can you hear better now?
Um, yes.
Yep, I think so too. The echo's not as loud.
Okay, so are there any questions for Mara?
My concern is that they are not gonna be picked up now by the microphone.
I need someone to say something.
Lisa, can you say something?
Yeah, this is Council McKay. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
That's good. If you guys are clear, that'll be good. We eliminated one piece of equipment. Hopefully we'll be able to pick this up. We are still progressing through the technology. Please bear with me, my apologies. Any other questions or comments for Mara?
This is Council Depot.
Counselor Depot?
I just wanted to say that I do know several residents that shellfish, and it would be interesting seeing this, that's gonna be open for it. And I just think it's a good idea if we can, you know, if just adding our influence will help them raise funds. I think that's a great idea.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of May 4th, 2020.
Council Depot, so no.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstention? Okay, motion carries. Mara, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, we are going to move to item 690, which is a city budget presentations. Sierra, are you online?
Yes, I'm online.
Okay, the first one will be, the first one listed is planning. That's on page 46 of your budget books. So we'll need to move to the budget books. Page 46 starts to the description of that section. And 47 is the actual first page of the financials. So Sierra, if you want, go ahead and give a brief overview, and then we'll open up the questions to the council.
Yes, so for the budget, I mean, you're changing under contractual services.
Okay, what page are you on? Which page are you on?
Sierra, I'm gonna need you to speak really, really loudly, so that everyone can hear you, and you can get picked up by the microphones. Please.
Can you hear me better now?
Yes. Thank you.
I believe the page is 31.
Okay, council, go to page 49. Okay, go ahead, Sierra.
So you increased in office supplies to the Esri GIES.
Sierra, I'm sorry, you're really not getting picked up by your microphone. Closely to the, closely to your computer.
Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay, so for page 49, you were often for the planning budget. That is in account for every...
She's cutting in and out, that's the problem.
Or professional employment within the there, for two upcoming, presentable on the hires.
Hey, Sierra?
Yes?
I'm gonna have you step off the call, and I'm gonna have you call into the meeting.
Okay.
Let me send you the phone number. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear. You said get off this and call.
Call this number 860-440-9974.
Can you say the last word?
9974.
Okay.
Thank you.
The phones are currently open. Okay, Sierra?
Hello?
Okay, we have you. Go ahead and... Yes?
Um, so where did you want me to start from?
The beginning.
Okay, so for the planning department's budget on page 49, I was just gonna go through the operating expenses and just really highlight what the increases are, what the increases were for. Starting with the office supplies and advertising. That was increased for this budget to compensate for the Esri GIES license that was given to the city of Grattan, then off or purchased to the city of Grattan for professional development. There are two trainings coming up next year that would be good for a city planner. One is the Southeastern ECU Conference. And another one is the APAE Annual Conference in Boston. Dennis and Lita, those are two local conferences that would be great for a city planner to be involved in to keep the city of Grattan current on all of our stuff. Vehicle operations, that's the same. And for contractual services...
Speak up, you're somehow, you're mumbled.
My, sorry. Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
So, did you hear?
The contractual services. Yeah, we're good. Go to contractual services.
Contractual services is increased to, for EV's construction and future application. Also, the scanning of documents that needs to be done between the scan optics. Also, any refined zoning regulations for the five corners in Thane Street area, as well as strategic planning and any TIF consulting services that we may need.
Okay.
And so...
Anything else?
Um, that is the same for the, well... No, I guess that's it, 'cause you guys are going, yeah, that's it.
Yep, we're gonna, we're gonna do planning first, and we'll do economic development in a minute. Any questions on the planning budget? Counselor? Counselors? Okay, we're gonna move over to economic development.
Somebody started to say something.
Who did?
I don't know. Was there a question?
I was about to ask a question. This is Council McKay.
Council McKay, go ahead.
I was just having trouble with hearing with the contractual services. The only thing for like something to do with electric boats and the zoning. What else was?
There's increases due to support that we're gonna be doing for electric boats, five corners, and some other economic development that we have, other projects that we're gonna do. And so we're gonna need legal services for them, legal opinions, and support from our attorneys.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, we're gonna go on to economic development. Sierra, what page do you wanna go to?
53.
Okay, we're going to page 53, council. All right.
Um, now, this is on me. I think there may be a typo on 53, and I just didn't catch it until today. So for office supplies, does yours read 16.5?
Yep.
Yeah, that's supposed to be switched to contractual services. So those are normally the bottom two are the only ones that need to really be flipped. But I worked with Ron on that.
Okay, hold on, hold on a second. Counselor, just to let you know that on page 53, under operating expenses, the office supply and advertising should be $2,000, and the contractual services should be $16,500. Those should be flipped. It doesn't change the budget. It just changed the accounting code that they're in, cost, excuse me, cost center that they're in. Okay, go ahead, Sierra?
So starting with the contractual services, that amount was increased to account for the city's new marketing and communications implementation. So that accounts to help go to pay for some of the consultant services for that. Office supplies were increased to account for a cellphone, as well as an Esri secondary account user. Professional development was also increased for some training opportunities. And then the mileage reimbursement was something that wasn't previously budgeted, and so now, moving forward, we're budgeting that.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, anything else you wanna go through on your budget?
Um, no.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from the council? Okay, that's good. We're done. Thank you, Sierra.
You're welcome. Good evening.
Good, thank you. Good night. Okay, we're gonna move to building and zoning. We start on page 37 of your budget books. Carlton, what page would you like to start on?
We're adjusting.
Okay, as long as we're staying 6 feet away, I'm good. All right, what page, what page do you wanna start?
I don't have page numbers, unfortunately.
Oh, okay. Give me an idea of what you wanna talk about, and I will get the council's...
I'm gonna start with the 1.579 million.
Okay, council on page 40 at, actually, go to page 39. You'll see it there, the proposed number. And then at the top of page 40, you will see it there, also the proposed number.
Okay. So, whoops, go ahead. Yep, 39 and then 40. Yep, perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, so as you will see, the, the budget is down, um, minus seven point four-four percent. There was no, uh, it's all level spending that, uh, this budget has, has shown. There are no increases, uh, from any line items, uh, on the budget. Uh, the highlights this year was that we brought down the, um, reserved vehicles. We had quite a bit of money last year, uh, put up into the, into the budget, and now we brought it back down to, uh, eight thousand dollars where we're, uh, so we just capital reserves. We're not per, planning on purchasing a vehicle, it's just so that we can smooth it over for five or ten years from now when we need to buy a vehicle. We're not hustling to try, trying to find forty-five thousand dollars. The, uh, we have moved some money around due to the fact that we have Kevin Quinn, um, on board full-time with us now, and so we moved some money out of budget contractual services into a salary li, line item, um, on there. Otherwise than that, I don't know of any real changes that, um, we've done to the, done to the budget. Like I said, all the line items went back to the, to what they were. Lot of monies being, not a lot of money, but we're using office supply monies to move downstairs. We have currently about, um, three-quarters of us down there, and, um, I'm the only one that needs to get, get down there as soon as, uh, that, that time is available to do that. Is there any questions that I could, um...
Counsel, are there any questions or comments on, uh, building budget?
Yeah, this is Counselor Stanford.
Counselor Stanford?
How many staff members do you have?
How many staff? So, I have, uh, one admin and, uh, two building inspectors and myself. For a total of four.
Are you all staff members going downstairs to the basement?
Right now, I have three staff members down there in the basement. I have the admin, I have Kevin Quinn and Walt Weisick, and I will be going down also shortly.
So, vehicles that you all have now are updated to go out?
The, the vehicles that we, we currently, well, in the beginning of the year, well, really, in October, we bought a, a new, uh, vehicle, uh, for my office, which then took the old vehicle and went over to, uh, Kevin Quinn. And we just recently, uh, awarded a bid to a state bid contract for replacement of, um, of the assistant building officials', uh, vehicle, uh, on there. So, the, yes, the vehicles will be, uh, sort of new. Uh, there's, like I said, one vehicle that probably got a hundred thousand miles on it. It's, um, twelve years old, but it only right now goes between here and electric boat and Pfizer's, where we feel that, that we're pretty confident that we can control that, but, 'cause it stays, you know, so local. Yes, sir?
Any other comments from the council regarding the building, uh, the, yes, the building budget? Can you hear enough? Okay. Whoops, sorry. That's it. Then we're, we're done with building? Carlton, thank you. We're gonna move to human resources?
We got, we got, uh, two partitions.
Oh, you're right. Sorry, we gotta go to page...
Forty-two?
Four, uh, get me there. Thirty-seven, you're right, you got it, boards and commissions. Is that forty-two? No.
Forty-three.
Starts on page forty-three. Starts on page forty-three, these are boards and commissions. Uh, forty-four is an actual breakdown for boards and commissions. Carlton?
So, um, as you see, this budget is down two percent. My, uh, office staffs, the, um, harbor management, conservation commission, zoning board of appeals, and, and Eastern Point Historic District. The harbor management, we put very minimal money to, because they have earned, uh, they, they charge for their mooring fees. We have been, uh, putting that money into a special reserved account, and I think that account is around fifteen to sixteen thousand this year. Uh, we'll get a, we're just starting to get that mooring fee money in, so it changes very quickly at this time of year. That's why I don't, I don't have that top number off, off my head, uh, on there. So, we just put a very minimal amount of money in that, in that account. All the other commission, all the other commissions are split up amongst the, uh, the three commissions. Uh, we do have six thousand dollars in the hu, in the historic district monies this year for contractual services for next budget year, due to the fact there was a, um, grant out there that was promised that money if we take that, if we finish that grant off. And so, we had to have that money in standby. And then, in the wetlands, um, uh, we have a higher contractual, uh, piece to that, due to the fact that we are doing, uh, wetlands mapping through, uh, a third-party, uh, soil scientist to, uh, map those ma, map the wetlands and then digitize that stuff for us.
Okay, any questions or comments on boards and commissions? Okay, that's it. Thank you, Carlton, I appreciate it.
Yep.
Next account is human resources on page twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Starts on page twenty-eight and twenty-nine. So, Linda, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, mine is, um, short and sweet. I hear an echo, I hope you don't.
I don't.
Wants to hear me twice. Okay, I also don't have the book in front of me, so I hope you're looking at the same items than I am. First of all, office expense and advertising. We were able to reduce that by twelve hundred and fifty dollars this year. Last year, we needed to purchase a printer. Um, we had been sharing a color printer with the finance department, but because of personnel changes, there's more movement going on there, and so we needed our own private printer.
Okay, hold on a second. This is on page thirty, counsel? Okay, go ahead, Linda.
I'm still sorry.
Nope, we're good.
Okay. All right. Professional development. We were al, also able to reduce that.
Linda, can you speak really loudly, please?
Oh, wow, no one's ever asked me that before. Okay. Um, so professional development, I was able to shave off about two hundred and fifty dollars off of that, uh, cost. We are keeping the national seminar subscription so that we can provide training for management, as well as have the HR department keep up on all of the different state and federal regulations. We also, um, have money in there for the subscription to SHRM, our professional association, and, um, we also pay attorney fees, which is the biggest... Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm not that, I'm not down that way. The, um, and the last one is the subscription to SHRM. The next line item is contracted services, and that includes our attorney's fees, our employee assistance program for all of our staff, and also comprehensive maintenance fee. We were able to reduce our attorney fees from, um, seventeen thousand to ten thousand, because hopefully, our union contract negotiations will be over this year. We have closed five contracts, and we have three more pending. And hopefully, by July, it will be done. Um, let's see. Full-time employees and the, uh, benefits, our pension has increased, and the biggest increase there is for salaries for the HR staff. Um, I want to bring up our HR assistant to HR generalist, because she has done phenomenal job the last two weeks. I mean, I'm sorry, the last two years. And she will be taking her SHRM exam in the next two years. She really is awesome for this department. Also, I have put in an increase for myself. I am on the very low end of other municipalities that I have looked at for pay. The median is about a hundred thirteen thousand dollars. Um, currently, um, with July, it's gonna be about ninety-one thousand. I put in for an additional amount, um, that will bring the total up to twenty thousand four hundred and seventy-one dollars. And, uh, that's it. Questions, please?
Questions or comments for, on human resources? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
This is Counselor Depot.
Whoop, hold on, Counselor Depot?
Um, I just wanted to say that I know that we're constantly meeting with negotiating contract, and I think that an increase for a contractor is well-deserved. He spends a lot of time in off-hours, you know, in the evenings and meetings and everything, and I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Any other questions or comments on human resources? Okay, Linda, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the last budget for the night, actually, the last budget, right? Period? Is fire, and that's on page sixty-one.
Good evening. You know what they say about the lash, right? They always say the best.
Say it the best.
You know it.
Exactly.
All right, um, if you turn to page sixty-three, you'll see the overall, uh, the overall numbers that we've come up with. On page sixty-four, if you go there, I'll highlight a couple of line items, and then, obviously, uh, you can ask any questions. The very first one, under personnel services, uh, line two, part-time employees, you just noticed that that's been zeroed out. That was a line item we used when we had volunteer firefighters. We currently have no volunteer firefighters, and we haven't for a few years. And so, uh, that money last year, the bulk of it was moved to other accounts, um, and now, this year, it's just been zeroed out. If you move down to operating expenses, uh, I would just, uh, note that, uh, fifth line down, H and H. That H and H stands for heart and hypertension. It's, uh, state law. It covers some of the older firefighters. The newer firefighters do not have that benefit, but, um, and that, that number is just a guess. It really is dictated, depending on how our older members, uh, handle, you know, are that year. But that's what H and H stands for, if anybody was curious. If you go farther down, contractual services, uh, I just mentioned it, because you'll notice that we had a hundred and twenty thousand dollars budgeted this year, and that was in anticipation of electric boat and all the things they were doing. We weren't sure what we would need for inspections and such. We did not use, uh, that. That's why the estimate's only ten thousand dollars. In there also, in contractual service, it's also goes towards lawyer fees, and we did negotiate our contract. So, it's about ten thousand dollars we used, but you'll notice we did budget a hundred and ten thousand for the coming year, uh, in anticipation of the building plans actually coming through for the electric boat project. Two lines down from that, the vehicles, I've just mentioned, we budgeted thirty-five thousand last year, and we're budgeting the same this year, but you'll notice the estimate's fifty-five thousand. That was, uh, due to the motor that blew on one of our engines. We did come to you, um, with an emergency, uh, you know, request to get that fixed, and we're taking that out of the budget. So, that's why it's estimated higher. And then, lastly, the reserve fund. You'll see, last year, we requested thirty thousand. That was to help purchase a new vehicle for the deputy chief. This year, we raised that to a hundred and fifty thousand. Thirty thousand will be for, um, going towards a new chief's car. Ten thousand is in anticipation of having to buy, uh, new Scott bottles in five years, so we start to save for that now. And then, a hundred and ten thousand will go towards future purchases of the fire trucks, which, um, you know, costs quite a bit of money, and as much, you know, anything we can save and don't have to bond in the long run is gonna help out the city.
If I may interrupt real quick, the good news in the current situation that we're in is we got, we're gonna get the motor fixed, we're gonna get the chassis fixed, and that's gonna extend the life of this truck. The bad news is, it extends the life of this truck and then our other trucks, so that the end of life is within a year or two of each other for both those vehicles. So, what I'm trying to do, what we're trying to do, is this, is to have the discipline to set aside the money and not touch that money, so that when it comes to time to buy a truck, you're only gonna have to bond one truck, and you'll be able to pay for the other, 'cause you'll have that money set aside. That takes discipline, it takes foresight, and it takes the ability of a chief not to touch the money, and for us, not to touch the money. Sometimes, we've been successful, sometimes we haven't. Sometime, you know, the town sometimes does this, uh, and sometimes, we don't put the money aside, or we just kick a thing down the road, and next thing you know, the big money comes up and you have to bond it, because we gotta have a fire truck. And so, that's the reason that we decided to put away money this year, in that amount. Sorry, chief, go ahead.
Uh, that's it. If anybody has any questions?
Questions or comments on the fire budget from the council?
This is Counselor McCabe. Have a question.
Counselor McCabe?
Can you explain the increase in the GPEs?
Uh, that was just, uh, I was using four percent, I think, is what the financial director had put out when we were, uh, trying to, in essence, guess, uh, for OPEB and, and things of that nature, and also for utilities. I mean, my guess now would be, hopefully, it'd be less, because the oil, the oil prices have certainly hit rock bottoms, so... Yeah, there was an increase also in rentals of the hydrants. We pay, we pay a hydrant rental every month for the hydrants in the city, uh, as does everybody, you know, the other fire districts in town. Everybody pays a rental fee. That fee is approximately a little over ten thousand dollars a month. So, when you look at that utility bill there, the vast majority of that is hydrant rental, and there will be a slight increase this year on that hydrant rental. It also goes then for electric, phone, cable, natural gas at company two, all those things. But the hydrant rental, we knew were, was gonna go up. We were trying to anticipate natural gas and gas for the trucks and all those things going up.
Any other questions or comments from the council on the fire department? Okay, that's it. Thank you, chief. Okay, that concludes our presentation of the budgets for fiscal year twenty-one. Okay, I'll turn this over to Finance Director Uos, he has a couple of comments. Do you wanna go over non-departmentals? Is that what you wanted?
I just wanna point out one thing in the non-departmental section, which is if we go to page one fourteen. And in an effort to, to help with this budget, and one of the things that we did last year was we put aside the two million dollars of undesignated capital projects with kind of, with our freeze plan, not knowing with the permitting fees and the scheduling, if they did come in, we didn't wanna make the big assumption that we were gonna get them. As we all know, plans change for certain things. Those did come in for the most part, um, should come in on schedule. So, this year, you'll see there's a huge decrease in that undesigned capital. That went back down to zero this year from the two million that was budgeted. So, I just wanna point that out, 'cause that was a significant change in the budget. That's all I have for that. I just wanted to point that out.
Okay. Any other questions on the budget at this time? Any accounts, any categories, any questions? Okay, hearing none. We'll start in the beginning of the, the agenda on, uh, number five sixty-one, Groton Utilities Financials. We have presented the financials to you, electric, water, and sewer. We will discuss these in detail at the Committee of the Hall Meeting on five eighteen. Just wanted to make sure that you had them. I'm required to get them to you by April thirtieth, uh, but I don't want you to approve them until we approve the city budget, because they are impactful. Okay, we're gonna move on to seven forty-eight, which is a donation request, Groton Heights Waterfront Festival. This is, now, this festival has been moved into the fall now. I don't remember the new date, but they are asking for support. But they are asking for support, they're asking for financial support, but they also ask us for other support in the form of chairs, tables, canopies, sound system, mobile sound system, trash cans, metal trash cans, and sometimes they need snow fence. So this is, they're, what they're asking for in this case is financial support, but then they will also be asking for additional in-kind support as well. Do you know what we did last year for them, do you have that number?
I don't, I meant to grab that.
I don't remember what we had for last year. I do know that currently, right now, I think we're on track at like five hundred dollars per donation, isn't that?
We've been like two fifty to five.
Two fifty to five?
We've been bouncing around, depending on.
Okay, sorry. And my memory may be fading.
Depending on what's going on somewhere.
Okay, yep.
They're kind of all over.
So I will open it up to the council for discussion and recommendation.
This is Councilor Depot.
Councilor Depot, please go ahead.
Um, I was just wondering, I know that we were working on trying to track when Groton Utilities is donating and it's being implicated by us, so. Do we know if Groton Utilities has donated to them?
I don't, I don't know the answer. There, let me find out if Groton Utilities is gonna donate. This used to be called Groton Bank Day, now it's called Groton Heights Waterfront Festival. We'll also have to see if they are donating to Art on Groton Bank, which is, Art on Groton Bank had been established and then this was brought in and incorporated with Art on Groton Bank together. And last year?
Well, last year we did a thousand and then we, we had them split at five hundred, five hundred.
Right.
When they came back, because it was under the same, if I recall.
Right, last year, because what happened was, we got dual requests. We thought the one request was for both and that's why we split it to five hundred and five hundred for last year. So let me find out if, uh, Groton Utilities. Okay, what I could, what we can do is I can get that information, even if we move this to the, the committee of the whole in May, there's still time since everything's been pushed to the fall. So I'd much rather do that than try to press the council for a number and they don't have information. Does that make sense, or should we?
Yeah, I can get the history on what we've done over the past.
Okay, we will also get you history, council, I apologize for not having that in hand. And I'll talk to the utilities and see what they're doing as well. So this ends up being informational only, I will not ask you to move this. Okay, we're gonna go to seven sixty-six, tax collector suspense list. Uh, excuse me, Director Uos?
So this, this comes to, to the council every year, it's put together by the town tax collector. And it's a list of taxes that they're looking to put, and move from the receivable listing over to the suspense listing. It's not writing them off, it's just moving them and, and kind of taking them off the books and putting them on another list. And the reason for that is they've moved, they've tried to do mailings, they can't. Get ahold of people or find people, businesses may have gone out of business, so there's personal property stuff that they know they cannot, won't be collected because the business is no longer operational. But if you go through the list, you'll see a majority of them, the majority of them are motor vehicles. So it's people that have moved out of town and like I said, they cannot locate them. If they, they do come back into town and try to pay another tax and with, under that same name, the suspense listing will pop and that will become payable to the, to the city. But right now, they're just kind of putting them off to, off to the side, just because they, they cannot find the person. And instead of keeping them on their radar, it's kind of putting them off to the side, that's the easiest way to explain it. But like I said, there's no real estate in here, because real estate, they can do tax sales on. It's truly just motor vehicle and personal property.
Okay. Any questions on that? Alright, I'll need a motion to move that to the mayor and council meeting of May fourth, two thousand and twenty.
Councilor Depot, so moved. Councilor McCabe, second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Abstention, motion carries. Okay, we're gonna move to seven sixty-eight, State of Connecticut, Pecatia Grant. We put in for a grant of the amount of nineteen thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventeen cents to, uh, basically overhaul and restore our audio system. We have a relatively new video system, it's only about a year old. We wanted to upgrade the, upgrade the audio system. Sean Greeley was kind enough to let us know about this grant. And then he actually filled out the paperwork for us and helped us with the submission of the grant. We were awarded the grant, so because it is a grant, I'll need council's approval to accept the grant. So any questions on the grant? Okay, hearing none, I need a motion to move it to the mayor and council meeting of May fourth, two thousand and twenty. Councilor Depot moved, Councilor Stanford seconded, so we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention, motion carries, let me double-check my agenda. Okay, we're there. I did, I did get everything right? Okay, that's what I have. Alright, I will take a motion to adjourn. We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Oppose? Abstention, we are adjourned. Thank you council, thank you for your tolerance of me tonight. Actually, I think it went well.